All right. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm going to call this meeting to order. It is November 18, 2025. This is a zoning meeting of the Burnley County Board of Commissioners. First up, Director Ham, are there any changes or additions on the agenda tonight? Or updates on the case?
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, good afternoon. We have no changes proposed today. We'd like to proceed as scheduled.
All right. Thank you very much, Director. Commissioners, not seeing any proposed changes up here, so we'll proceed as ordered in the agenda. First off, I move to approve the October 14, 2025 special zoning meeting minutes.
Seven.
A second from Commissioner Barbara Baca. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal the affirmative. Yes.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes at four zero. Next, we will proceed with staff and applicant presentation, and then a public hearing. Madam Clerk, could you please swear in all those giving testimony today?
Yes, Mr. Chair. All those providing testimonies, please stand up. Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony you are about to give at this hearing shall be the truth and nothing but the truth under penalty of perjury?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right, we've got everyone sworn in. So Director Ham, maybe if you'll give us a little roadmap to how the presentation's going to work, and then we'll move forward from there.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. So first, very excited about this project. This is about 18 or so months in the making between Planning and Development Services and County Public Works. We've also worked closely with our other internal county colleagues, relevant outside agencies, and there's been quite a bit of engagement with the community. Commissioner Baca's participated in some of these meetings. We've engaged with neighborhood associations directly, business leaders. And so want to extend gratitude and heartfelt thanks to those that have participated in this process up to today's point. Thank those that are here today to provide additional comments. Today's proceeding, so we'll start with the presentation from Mino Savoka. He's the planner that's assigned to this case from Planning and Development Services. We'd then like to move into a presentation from Richard Meadows from County Public Works, and then give time to Jessica Lawless, who is our consultant with Decker. We think that five minutes for each of the county staff, and then 10 minutes for the consultant, so hopefully get through the content of the presentation in about 20 minutes. Commissioner, that'll stand for questions.
Commissioners, any questions about the run of show there? All right, and then after those staff presentations, for those of you that may be here from the public, after that, we will proceed with the public hearing, where we'll allow comment. Go ahead.
Okay. Good afternoon, Chair Olivas and Commissioners. My name is Mino Savoka. I am a senior planner with the Burnley County Planning and Development Services Department. The item before you now is Agenda 4A, the case number SPR 2025-0003, a request to amend the Southwest Area Plan. This request was deferred for 60 days at the September 9 BCC zoning hearing. This request accompanies the next item, SPR 2025-0004, a request to establish a new sector development plan along Coors Boulevard. If it pleases the Commission, I would like to recommend that the Commission hear each case in its entirety, and then vote on both together. The two cases are related and dependent on one another, and should move through the process together, but I will defer, of course, to the Commission to decide how they wish to structure the hearing. The Southwest Area Plan is a Rank II area plan, originally adopted in 2001, that applies to the southwest quadrant of the county, roughly west of Interstate 25 and south of Central Avenue. As a Rank II plan, this document provides broad guidance for development of this area, including recommended residential densities and establishing centers of commercial activity. This plan also encourages and accommodates Rank III plans. This request establishes three new neighborhood activity centers within the Southwest Area Plan along Coors Boulevard. And so this is an updated map that I'm showing here of the centers in the plan. The new centers are located where Coors Boulevard intersects Sage Road, Aronall Road, and Blake Road. So those are these three red plus signs here on the map. This request corresponds with the county's proposed new sector development plan for this corridor, which I will discuss shortly. The county's planning framework requires consistency between plans. The proposed sector plan, which I'll present in a few minutes, falls within the Southwest Area Plan, and as such, establishment of the activity centers in the sector plan requires an amendment to this plan. The request furthers the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan, namely those associated with the Centers and Corridors chapter. Centers and corridors is a major planning framework in the comprehensive plan, recognized not only by the county, but by the City of Albuquerque and the Mid-Region Council of Governance as a fundamental concept in regional land use planning. The comprehensive plan and Southwest Area Plan both embrace the Centers and Corridors framework, creating these three new neighborhood activity centers meets the requirements for neighborhood activity centers as defined in the plan's policies. The West Side Strategic Plan, first adopted jointly by the county and the city of Albuquerque in 1999, proposed both the Blake and Aronall Centers as future neighborhood activity centers. The area around Coors and Sage, while not recognized by the West Side Strategic Plan, has development patterns that demonstrate an opportunity for redevelopment, and this is also recommended as a neighborhood activity center. The amendment also furthers the goals and policies in the Southwest Area Plan itself. Policies of the plan encourage sector development plans to address the needs of sub-areas and outline the requirements for neighborhood activity centers. The plan does propose one new policy, Policy 31A, which recognizes the new activity centers and ensures the centers within the plan are consistent with the comprehensive plan's policies. Agencies provided no adverse comments to this plan amendment, and staff did not receive any public feedback at this request. At the July 2 CPC hearing, the County Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval to this body. Based on agency comments, neighborhood and property owner input, and planning staff's analysis, staff recommends approval of this plan amendment, which paves the way for the adoption of three new activity centers in the proposed Coors Boulevard Sector Plan, which I'll discuss next. This concludes my presentation for this item, and I'll stand for questions from the Commission before I move on to the next agenda item.
Commissioners, any questions so far? Please proceed.
Okay, very well. Okay, the item before you now is Agenda Item 4B, Case SPR 2025-0004, a proposal for a new sector plan along South Coors Boulevard. The South Coors Boulevard Sector Development Plan, if adopted, would be a Rank III plan. The plan encompasses a roughly four-mile stretch of Coors Boulevard, generally starting from Bridge Boulevard on the north to about Gun Club Road on the south. This project is complementary to a major road improvement project to Coors Boulevard, which will improve traffic safety and encourage transit use, walking, and cycling. My colleague in Public Works, Richard Meadows, will introduce this project shortly. This plan is informed in large part by our day-to-day interactions with the public as planners. They come to the County Planning Department looking for housing options or a place to start their business. If not on Coors, then often within the neighborhoods, where that's not always appropriate. Right now, the zoning on Coors does not easily accommodate many of these commercial and housing requests, but approval of this plan could change that. This plan is the culmination of over a year of engaging with the community to determine their vision for the corridor and how this land use plan might align with the values, history, and culture of the South Valley. The result of these efforts is a plan that reflects South Valley residents' need for places to live, work, learn, and grow, while relieving pressures to develop in the surrounding rural neighborhoods or on agricultural land. The plan area exists along Coors Boulevard, a major west-side corridor identified in the Centers and Corridors framework discussed in the previous case. Coors represents a transition from the semi-urban South Valley to the urbanizing West Mesa to the west. The comprehensive plan has for decades identified the corridor as being within the developing urban development area, recognizing its significance not only as a transportation artery, but as an economic hub. The area presently has a patchwork of zoning and land uses from the agricultural A1 zone, which you see in green, to the commercial C1, which is in red, to the industrial M1, which is in purple. This has resulted in inconsistent and at times incompatible land uses, unpredictable land use patterns, and a prevalence of special use permits along the corridor. This plan introduces two new zoning categories in an effort to provide greater consistency and predictability with uses tailored to the needs and values of the South Valley residents and to achieve the vision of the comprehensive plan. An activity center zone, which is SC-AC in orange on this screen, would be applied to properties at key intersections. An opt-in corridor zone, SC-C in brown, simplifies and streamlines development for properties along the Coors Boulevard corridor. The proposed zoning categories are based on the county's O1 and C1 zones and expand those land uses to encourage employment-generating businesses as well as affordable and diverse housing options for workers, seniors, young adults, and a spectrum of existing residents. As we propose new zoning to achieve the vision, we also propose design standards to achieve higher-quality development. Our consultant, Jessica Lawless of Decker, will go into greater detail about the zoning and design standards in the plan. At the July 2 CPC hearing, the County Planning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval to this body. And then at the September 9 zoning hearing, the Board of County Commissioners voted to defer the case for 60 days to allow more time for additional public input. In those past two months, the planning team has hosted and attended numerous meetings with Neighborhood Association representatives, met with business leaders, and solicited additional input from residents in the area. We have been tracking all of this input, which is summarized in Attachment 7 in the staff report. Many residents expressed support of the plan and reflected sentiments similar to those shared by participants in the workshops and online surveys. Of the concerns, comments most recently pertain to building heights, allowable residential densities, and how new development might impact traffic on the corridor. Today, staff is presenting the plan as recommended for approval by the County Planning Commission with some minor corrections since the July 2 CPC hearing to address errors in the proposed zoning text and to reclassify certain properties at the request of property owners and neighborhood leaders. These modifications are reflected in Attachment 8. Regarding concerns about residential densities, heights, and traffic, staff is prepared to make additional modifications with direction from the Commission. Based on agency comments, neighborhood and property owner input, and planning staff's analysis, staff respectfully recommends approval of this request. I will now invite Richard Meadows to discuss the roadway safety project that was a significant impetus for this plan. And after that presentation, I will stand for questions.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Olivas and Commissioners. I'm Richard Meadows. I'm Transportation Planning Manager with Technical Services in Public Works Division. And I'm here with our consultant, Jessica Lawless from Decker. So we're going to talk about what is included in this plan and as well as what this plan does not include today. The plan area, as Mino said, extends from Gun Club on the south up to Bridge Boulevard on the north with approximately 1,300 acres. Includes residential, non-residential uses. The areas that are in the City of Albuquerque are designated. City of Albuquerque is unmarked. The plan intends to create these new mixed-use centers along a major transit corridor within walking distance of nearby neighborhoods to promote a variety of housing choices, economic opportunities, and particularly in these activity centers, higher, as are defined in higher-ranking plans. So to talk about the plan in terms of, from a land use perspective, one of the important things in the comprehensive plan is to integrate our land use with our transportation system. Coors Boulevard is a regional transportation facility connecting Albuquerque's west side. We recently were awarded a large federal grant to address safety issues along the corridor. The corridor is on the high fatality and injury network. In some places have twice the average crash rate as the rest of the region. So this road project that we are currently designing will have pedestrian and bicycle facilities to help people, especially using transit, to get to their destinations and make it safer for them. It'll have places for safe crossings, enhanced bus stops. It'll have features to slow down traffic, such as raised medians and driveway consolidation, narrow travel lanes, and especially for safety corridor lighting. The plan, the sector plan, is supported by our regional metropolitan transportation plan that was just adopted this year, as well as the county's comprehensive plan in the transportation chapter. And both of those documents promote safe bicycle pedestrian and transit connection, compact development patterns along major transit corridors such as Coors, and in mixed-use activity centers. And this is in order to reduce vehicle miles traveled by bringing destinations closer together. It also has the goal of infill development. There's over 200 acres of vacant land along South Coors in those centers and along corridors, which again reduces sprawl and reduces vehicle miles traveled. And of course, reducing vehicle miles traveled is important because that brings down greenhouse gases that cause climate change in our region. So the 2045 Metropolitan Transportation Plan has a target scenario, and that scenario encourages diverse housing options in the region. It calls for zoning reform as a tool to provide more affordable housing throughout the region. It calls for increasing densities and mixed uses in centers and corridors such as proposed along Coors. And it references a regional housing needs assessment. And that study finds that 58% of renters on the Southwest Mesa are cost burdened. They pay more than 30% of their income towards rent, and there's a need for 1,000 to 2,000 additional affordable rental houses or rental units on the Southwest Mesa. Finally, in terms of traffic along the corridor, there is capacity for new development on South Coors. The map on the right shows the volume to capacity along the corridor, and it ranges anywhere from 40% to 60% capacity on the corridor. It varies in different areas. This is a major transit corridor, as I mentioned. ABQ Ride is proposing to improve frequency along the corridors and on the Southwest Mesa with 30-minute headways. Also, in terms of traffic, the Institute of Traffic Engineers documents that multifamily housing produces less traffic per unit than for retail and single-family housing. And mixed uses reduce that even further by encouraging walkability and internal capture within developments. The South Coors corridor area is similar to Bridge Boulevard, which also has a corridor plan and has a major, it's a major transit corridor with activity centers. Both are in areas designated as urban in the comprehensive plan. And the Bridge Boulevard similarly encourages or allows multifamily housing of three stories. And that is my presentation. Let me introduce Jessica Lawless to continue.
Thank you, Richard. Good afternoon. Jessica Lawless with Decker. I'm going to move things along a little where there's some repetition in my slides, but as has already been mentioned by both Mino and Richard, the majority of the planning area is classified as developing urban and is seen by higher-ranking adopted policy to be the place to allow some opportunities for greater housing choice and neighborhood-serving commercial uses to alleviate some of those development pressures within the adjacent established neighborhoods. As Mino mentioned, there is a little bit of inconsistency in terms of what we're seeing on the ground from the zoning versus the land use. While there is a fair number of zoning that is A1 along the corridor, the reality is that the land uses don't actually reflect agricultural uses and that there isn't a lot of agricultural, currently-used irrigated lands within the planned boundary. There are some major public open spaces, including the Hubble Oxby Farm, and those are planned to be preserved throughout this planning document. So in terms of our kind of process and how we got here, we have been working with the county and the community since the summer of last year. We went through three major phases, all building upon one another. So we started really just understanding the baseline conditions of the area and had a number of public engagement milestones along the way. You can see on the bottom of the screen there kind of a summary of all of the engagement touchpoints that we had throughout this process. So we did have a steering committee that was comprised of both members of the community and the business community. We had eight committee sessions with them on a monthly basis throughout this process. We also had a field tour with that group where we spent an afternoon exploring in the corridor at the onset of the project to understand the conditions on the ground. We did attend the South Valley Growers Market and set up a booth and talked to folks there. And then we had two public open houses at major milestones within the planning process. The first one was at the conclusion of the existing conditions phase to present those findings and to do visioning with the community to be able to establish project goals and a vision statement and get alignment on that before we moved into the subsequent drafting of the plan. And then another, when we had the draft plan in place that had the zoning proposals to present those zoning implications to the community. After that draft plan was available, we also had two office hours by which property owners could come in and speak to us and staff at two different opportunities, one during lunch and one in the evening, where we and staff made ourselves available to discuss the potential implications on specific properties on a case-by-case basis. And then we had a fairly robust project website that had over 3,000 contact points, as well as an online survey that had 252 responses. We also did substantial noticing as part of this process. So both of the public open houses that I mentioned, specific mailers and invitations were sent to all of the property owners within the planned boundary. Once the plan was released, and there were some implications on M1 property owners within the activity centers specifically, we mailed notices to those property owners specifically as well to discuss the impacts. I've already mentioned the open houses, and then again, county staff did two additional public notices as part of the official hearing process that included all of the plan owners within the property area as well as a five-mile buffer. A little bit of input just from our project website. It had a lot of interactive polling that got the same information from the community as we had available in the public open houses. So if people weren't able to attend those, there were additional opportunities on the project website to get familiar with the process, provide the vision, do a number of quick polls, access all of the meeting materials and all of the draft plans. We had about 3,000, over 3,000 total website visits. That was about 21,000 different individuals visiting the site and 45 contributions in terms of polls and comments directly on our maps. We did also do a community survey. We had 252 responses to that survey received. It really kind of cemented the community priorities that we heard throughout our planning process, which included that 82% of the respondents really wanted access to convenient services that allowed for daily errands to happen within the planned area. 81 of those wanted to support more of those opportunities, being local. 79% really wanted an increased opportunity for public spaces that were easily accessible. 74% supported expanding retail and food options. There was favor in terms of steady commercial growth within the corridor as a whole, and about 26% of respondents really favored that growth to be happening within the activity centers. And preferences for providing a larger housing choice within the activity centers, but also along the corridor as a whole. So in terms of how we incorporated that feedback into the planning process, you do see a number of expansions for housing choice in terms of the types of uses and the continuum uses that the public comment that we received encouraged to things like townhouses, assisted living, you know, multi-generational housing options, workforce housing. There was a lot of concern about beautification and safety improvements to the corridor, so providing sufficient infrastructure for pedestrians and cyclists and transit users, and then also ensuring that there's cohesive streetscaping and landscaping for beautification and aesthetic reasons. Supporting local businesses and jobs, and then, as I mentioned, support for kind of continued steady commercial growth along the corridor and within the activity centers. So that process led us to develop three guiding principles based on the input that we received from the public along the way. The first is that Coors in particular, but all of the streets within the planning area really need to provide safe and attractive conditions. As you've heard, there are a lot of pedestrian fatalities and safety issues that are happening along the corridor, so really making sure that the infrastructure provides safe facilities for both bicyclists, pedestrians, and transit users was a critical item that we needed to move forward. This idea of creating thriving destination centers where people could access those daily services and jobs conveniently from their existing neighborhoods where they didn't necessarily have to travel long distances or across the river. And then this idea of including complete neighborhoods where, you know, you can easily accessible those service, easily access, access those services, excuse me, by foot or a variety of options, including again, a larger variety of housing choice that allowed multi-generational and workforce housing to operate within the corridor. So in terms of how that played out on a land use framework within the plan itself, there are four activity centers along the corridor that this plan proposes to move forward. Three of those, the ones along Sage, Aronall, and Blake, are really intended to be neighborhood-serving community centers. So the scale and uses within those are, is of a small, of a less impactful nature than what is happening at Los Estanciaus, which is a community activity center as defined within your policy that is really intended to serve a much larger subset of the South Valley. And all of those activity centers would be connected by Coors, which is a multimodal transit line that would allow for safe access for a number of users. There were a number of goals that are being moved forward within this plan. Anything from sustainability and resilience, really ensuring that we're incorporating sustainable practices as roadway improvement projects or new developments move forward. Focusing moderate-density mixed-use development in activity centers, again, to alleviate some of those pressures on the established neighborhoods on the exterior of the plan area. Providing increased transportation and mobility options, again, housing choice and livability and ensuring a continuum of housing options. Economic development in terms of attracting new jobs and industry to the area to really strengthen that jobs and housing imbalance and promote workforce training. And then to alignment with the infrastructure that's necessary to ensure that all of this can happen in a unified and collaborative way. So as Mino has mentioned, this plan moves forward two specific zones. The first is a corridors zone that is really, only applies to the parcels that are indicated in that tan color on the screen. This is an opt-in zone, which means that the property owners would actually need to submit a zone change in order to get the benefits of that zoning. So it would take a public process to make that happen. And the intent here is really to provide more neighborhood-serving uses along the corridor. The second zone is an activity center zone, and this applies to all of the The second zone is an activity center zone, and this applies to all of the areas in orange, although the zoning category itself does provide some, the, the level of uses and development within those three zones to the north are less intense than what is allowed within act, the Los Estancia Activity Center, again, because it's a greater designation in terms of the type of center designation itself. And then those orange zones are actually intended to be rezoned at the adoption of this planning effort, so that would be a subsequent zone change that would, that would happen simultaneously with the adoption of this plan, except for M1 parcels. We have had numerous conversations with the M1 property owners within those activity center boundaries, and similar to the corridor zone, those would need to undergo a zone change in order for the zoning to change on those particular properties. And there's about seven of them, I believe, in question. And then on top of that, there are design standard, a design standard overlay that applies to all of the parcels, non-residential parcels within the planned area. So as new development happens or expansions of existing development, they would need to comply with some of the streetscape and landscape requirements, for example.
Just to clarify that M1 zoning is industrial?
Oh, yes. Sorry.
Light industrial, and that exists on the corridor.
I have a question. So the design overlay that you're talking about, does it also include height restrictions or anything on the, on the?
The height is actually outlined within the zoning, and I have a couple of slides later in this presentation that will walk you through exactly what those are. So in terms of our zoning framework, we really wanted to ensure that we're operating under your existing zoning framework. So the way that this zone has been established is that it builds off of your O1 and C1 zones, so your office zone and your neighborhood commercial zones. It looks at what the historical and kind of desired uses are that are occurring along the corridor, so things that staff is getting repeated applications for, things that where there are a lot of special use permits, and it tries to allow some of those, and as well as the community desired uses that we were hearing throughout the process. So it allows all of those things to happen, you know, within this zoning framework, along with some character protections to ensure that they don't negatively impact the surrounding areas, and we'll discuss those in a little bit more detail. We know that zoning is complicated and that folks are always concerned about what the implications of zoning changes are to their property specifically, so I do just want to highlight that when this zoning was released, there was an interactive zoning map on the project website that allowed people to zoom in on their particular property, leave comments, and then again, we paired that with the official office hours so that people could drop in and ask questions about the implications of this on their particular parcels. So just quickly, a couple of the major items in terms of the regulations that I anticipate you will be interested in. In terms of permissive uses, again, I mentioned that all of the uses in the O1 and C zones are permissive, including some additions that are very specific to this plan area. So within the corridor, that includes townhouses and apartments that are less than 12, or greater than or equal to 12 DUs per acre. It allows for mixed-use residential, so allowing a combination of retail and housing, for example, to happen on one site, whether that is in adjacent buildings or within one building that has retail on the ground floor and housing above. It allows some more flexibility for signage along the corridor. It allows for temporary events that are less than seven days a year with a special use permit to happen more freely. It allows for mobile food vending establishments as identified within C1 and C2 of your existing zoning code, and again, that's a direct correlation to public comment that we heard throughout the planning process. It allows for indoor amusement, which was something that was a desire of the community to allow some of those desired services to come in. It does allow for light manufacturing and food processing, but there are some additional protections put in place in terms of that they have to be located within enclosed buildings, or there have to be screening components that are above and beyond what the underlying zoning allows. And it allows for cannabis uses and home occupations, but again, those have some use permissions in place. It does not allow for single-family uses to happen within the corridor, so that is a major change. And again, the, the intent here was to allow for more of the workforce housing or the commercial services that we were hearing as a desired use. It doesn't allow any uses that are listed as permissive or conditional within those zones of the underlying zoning categories, so O1 or C1. And then it does allow for conditional uses as in C1 and C2. It allows for higher densities to be requested through a conditional use permit, so that would require a public hearing, and those could go up to 25 DU per acre within the corridor zone. It allows for a number of parks and recreational uses. It allows for conditionally contractors' yards to occur, but again, those have conditions in terms of size, storage, and screening, and the types of vehicles that could be stored. And then for those kind of more intense indoor amusement enterprises, those would need to be conducted through a condition or, or be allowed through a conditional use permit as well. The corridor zone is, is similar. It builds upon, or the, excuse me, the activity center zone builds upon the corridor zone, so you're going to see generally the same mix of uses, except for that it's going to allow higher densities of those within those designated activity centers. So permissively, that would be 25 DUs per acre for both townhouses, apartments, and mixed-use development. It does introduce hotels, motels, theaters, and indoor amusement as a permissive right. It also allows restaurants with onsite alcohol production. So the intent here was, we heard a lot from community members that they'd like to go have more opportunities to have dinner at local restaurants and, you know, potentially have a beverage along with that. It doesn't change the permissions for things like bars. It has to be associated with a food element. It allows for public spa, parks and open space to happen permissively without an additional public hearing, and then the other uses are the same as mentioned. And then the difference here in terms of the conditional uses is that it allows higher density housing to occur through a conditional use permit up to 50 DUs per acre. In terms of the maximum heights that are allowed within both of these zones, right now, the proposal is to allow up to 42 feet within the corridor zone, that's an equivalent of three stories, and 54 feet, or the equivalent of four stories within the activity center. You'll see in a moment that we believe that that actually, while it sounds scary in theory, these are much reduced heights from what is actually allowed within your current zoning. So it provides more certainty for the residents and the community within the planned area, and they are paired with a number of character protections. So two of those are here. So any building that exceeds two stories along cores within 40 feet of the cores right-of-way, that building actually must step back 10 feet before beginning the third floor. That intention there is really to alleviate the perception of the building mass and create view corridors along the roadway, which was one item that we heard was desired throughout the public comment period. And then the, the addition to that in, on the height protection side, if you're adjacent to low-density, single-family housing, a zone within 50 feet of that shared property line, the height can't actually exceed 30, 30 feet, which is about the equivalent of, you know, what most maximum heights in those districts would allow. In addition to that, there are some additional character buff, or buffering protections along MRG CD facilities. Part of what we heard from the public is that those are a very unique character-defining feature within this area that we want to continue to provide protections for. So there is a required 20-foot step-back buffer in which you can't put a building if you share a property line directly within, with those facilities. And then there is a minimum 15-foot landscape setback along the entirety of the cores right-of-way to create that kind of streetscape aesthetic that was requested by the public. And to just put the height kind of comparison in perspective, this is one particular property that we've heard through the process, that there's specific concern about within the Blake corridor. So you'll see here, the condition that is on the ground today is that there are parcels that would fall under the activity center zoning on the left. There's an MRG CD facility directly adjacent to that property line. It's about 145-foot right-of-way. And then on the other side of that facility, there are some low-density residential parcels. And so under your current system, using a 45-degree angle plane that gets drawn from the property line of the low-density, single-family parcel, you could actually reach up to 125-foot maximum building height. The current plan proposes a hard, a hard stop maximum at 54 feet. So that's, you know, more than your, you could build basically double almost under the existing zoning than what is allowed within the proposed plan. And that, again, is paired with the required buffers, and then there's some additional landscape requirements within the overlay that would kick in there too, so that that buffer would not contain a building within the first 20 feet, and there's some additional vegetative screening that occurs within that zone as well. The last kind of item that we're going to cover is parking. So we are building off of the existing parking standards within the underlying zoning, so what's happening within C1, with the exception that in, within the activity center only, you can apply for one exception, and that would either be taking a reduced parking requirement for multifamily of one and a half spaces per dwelling unit, or reduced number of 2.5 spaces per thousand for retail. Or you can take a 20% reduction for shared parking among maybe a master plan development within a, within an activity center or proximity to transit. So if you're within walking distance to a transit stop, you could get a reduction there as well. You can only use one of these, so we're not going to be building upon those. There is some protections in place to what is reasonable within the conditions that we're seeing along the corridor. And then I already mentioned there are a number of design overlay standards associated with this, so numerous things in terms of how you screen when you're adjacent to low-density development, numerous things about how you would ensure kind of facade articulation and massing to ensure, you know, character protections within the area, screening and buffering, and then how you lay out parking lots and create some accessible paths in connections to things like adjacent transit stops or other adjacent development that go in above and beyond what is in those current zoning code today. So that concludes my portion of the presentation, and we'll stand for any questions.
All right. Thank you to all of our presenters for all the information. Commissioners, open it up for any questions or comments to the presenters. Commissioner Frank Baca?
Sure. Thank you, staff, for your preparation.
And I want to first start by thanking everybody for their work, a very impressive document that I read, I think, at least three times, and trying to read again, and every time I read it, I see something different, it makes me think about something different. And it's complicated, and, you know, there's consequences, and there's unintended consequences. And as a person who lives in that community and has lived there essentially all my life, I have concerns and, but I also want to start by saying that there's some really good aspects of this, which I appreciate, and I made a list of most of them or some of them as you were talking, as all the presenters were talking, including design standards. I mean, I think that makes perfect sense. If we're going to have a building, let's think about how we design a building, because most of us on this day, if not all of us, have talked about quality projects, and it's not allowing projects, have quality projects, let's promote quality development in Burnley County. So I think that's a huge improvement. Talking about landscaping, you know, just as part of that, I think it's something that's extremely important, and I've had interaction with community members who have concern about that, and I always like, well, you know, it is what it is, because we want to beautify our community. It adds so much to our community in so many ways, not just from environmental, but aesthetic, you know, perspective. So I think that is, is something that's really, really important, the setbacks and the buffers, all these sorts of things are things that sound, you know, helpful to, to growth and development. And certainly the concern about safety and traffic are things that, you know, that I hear a lot, and a lot, and I'm, and I'm not underestimating how much I've heard about that, and that's from day one of my taking office, and quite frankly, before, at least a year before I took office, is concerns about roads, traffic, safety, that sort of thing. So, so I appreciate the work of staff in this regard, and, but I'm, I'm still not sure that I fully comprehend all aspects of it. And I do have a couple of questions, and I want to start by apologizing in terms of my, my style. I realize that over the past few minutes that I am an attorney, and I've done a lot of trials in my days, and my expertise at one point in time when I was doing criminal cases, both as a defense lawyer and as a prosecutor, is cross-examination. And I don't always intend for my questions to be, you know, pointedly and personal, but quite frankly, I, I really can't help myself with that, and so it's, it's not a reflection necessarily of your work, but it's just more a reflection of, of my style for, and that goes to everybody that has spoken. So just a few, a few questions for now, there may be some more now, and I understand that, sure, there will be public comments still, correct? So we may have some more of that if that was appropriate. So just a few things, just kind of random thoughts as, as I've heard the presentation. I'm, I'm always curious about numbers that people present in regards to the housing needs, and there was a, there was a statement that she, I think it was, as you, Ms. Lawless, stated, or somebody maybe, it's Mr. Meadows, I can't remember, of 1,000 to 2,000 units. And I've seen numbers thrown around for the last 12 years, 12 months, I've really been thinking about it, and I just wonder, where does that data come from? Where does the, the facts? I'm not really asking about the studies, because I know there's studies, I've looked at them, but where does the hard numbers, where's the survey, where's the actual information that supports the fact there is that need? And then once I get an answer to that, I'll tell you one of the reasons why I have really concern about that, that those numbers. So I see Mr. Meadows standing up there, so it sounds like he's going to be prepared to answer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Baca. So, well, first of all, I'm not a housing expert, so I do rely on studies, and, and mid-region council of governments with the city of Albuquerque conducted a region-wide housing needs assessment, and they broke the region down into smaller areas, you know, including the southwest mesa, and they looked at, I guess, data that they had collected through the census or other sources through HUD, and saw that there are a lot of residents who are cost, what they call cost-burdened. And so some of those numbers are not necessarily people that are homeless, although we have several thousand homeless people in our region, but there are numbers of people who, they're paying rent, but they're on the verge of being evicted because they can't pay that rent, and it's very difficult to pay the rent. And so, and there are numerous studies that say that's why we have such a large homeless population in our region, is because rents are so high. And the reason why rents are so high is because we have a shortage of housing in the region, a shortage of affordable housing. So if you look at all the housing, there's, there's enough housing, but there's a shortage of affordable housing, and many people do not have the means to continue to pay the rents that they have. And so this, that's what these numbers are based on, and they've been projected into the future. And so the report is suggesting that we need to be, start building more housing now within the rents that people can afford, and sometimes that means subsidizing housing because it's very expensive now, construction costs are very high, and so subsidizing, but also just increasing the supply, increasing the supply will help bring down some of those costs. So that's my understanding as a non-housing expert.
And thank you for that, and I appreciate that, and what you say makes, makes a lot of sense to me in terms of, yeah, the need for affordable housing. But there, if I understand correctly, there's really no component of this plan that, that creates affordable housing, as I... As I read that, I didn't see any place where it says that we're going to provide for affordable housing, or we're going to limit the growth to affordable housing. Isn't that correct?
Chair Olivas and Commissioner Baca, so, no, because this is a, this is a zoning plan. So, we are trying to provide opportunities for more types of housing, and by enlarging the, the zoning, what the zoning allows, you can provide more types. And that doesn't necessarily have to be big apartment buildings. It could be duplexes, it could be cottage development, it could be townhouses, it could be small apartment buildings, it could be a lot of different things. But right now, people have very limited, under the zoning that the county has right now, people have very limited options. They hit single-family only in most of the county, and on very large lots, half an acre or an acre, and that's very expensive for most people. And so, I think most of the public comment we heard was from people that already own homes, they already own property. But there are a lot of people out there that are looking for affordable housing, and we didn't hear from those people. So, that's why I have to rely on these studies that tell us there's a need out there. And so, by increasing the types of housing that we can build, especially along this corridor, that creates affordability. But it's through, it's through zoning, it's through opportunity and options and diverse housing choices.
And thank you, Ms. Law. I certainly agree with you that if there was 50,000 more units, the, the prices would go down, but we also know that people are not going to build if that's the case, if that's the direction we're, we're going. So, you have to, you know, find that, that balance, because, you know, developers, private or nonprofit, are something not going to build if they think that there's a glut in the market. And, and by encouraging, encouraging housing, we end up getting to the point where there is a glut, and so then that stops the, the building. But my, my real question, and you kind of lead me into that, is, is I've always had, since I first looked at this plan, I had some concern about why we just pick out this sliver, if you will, of the, of the, of the area, and not looking at what's happening on both sides of it. So, if you look to the west of that area, which I have, spent quite a few hours driving out there, and I just want to ask whoever might want to answer this, how, where are you of the literally, and this is not an exaggeration, literally hundreds, if not 1,000 units, as we speak, as we speak, apartment complexes, houses in gated communities, single-family homes, starter homes? Somebody said there's no townhomes. I can show you development, under construction right now, that has 50, at least 50 units under construction as we speak, directly to the west of this area, directly to the west, within less than a mile. And not only that, I don't know how many hundreds of acres are available, commercial land for sale as we speak. And my question, I guess, to you, and is, did you take that into consideration when you talk about the housing need? Did you look at what is actually being built as we speak, not projected? And I'm not even talking about what I've heard about the plans for hundreds and hundreds, if not thousands, of housing units direct west. I'm talking about in construction right now. Did you take that into consideration, what is going on currently as we speak west of this area?
Chair and Commissioner, I, I think this, the regional housing study did take into account the housing that is being built, as well as the gap in housing. And this gap in housing goes back several years. It's not something that just started now. But certainly, the city has gone a long ways in, in zoning reform to allow more different kinds of housing, and they are, we are seeing housing being built in the city. But I think the, the plan recognizes that all of our communities do need to consider the housing needs, and it shouldn't fall on one particular community or another, it should be spread throughout the, the region. We all have a responsibility to, to address that. Thank you. Sure.
Good afternoon, Chair Olivas, Commissioners. If I could also add to the conversation from the work that we do in planning, we hear what you're saying, Commissioner Baca, that you're observing construction in our region, and that's good news for, for, for all of us. And in the city, it sounds like they're, they're picking up some of the construction. We're also seeing more interest in development in some of our planned communities, like the upper petroglyph communities, for example. We haven't, hasn't started yet, there were projects in the pipeline. This project does come on the heels of approval of the comprehensive plan last June in 2024, and we did that plan. One of its achievements was to focus the planning and look at the demographics, the conditions, the planning that has taken place in the unincorporated communities. We have a concept called community plan, community areas in the comprehensive plan, and where we were able to look at demographics in the southwest community area, which does include the south cores area that we are looking to further define with this south cores sector plan. And where the, it does reveal that, you know, similar to the report that Mr. Meadows has pointed out, we do have cost-burdened, you know, populations. When you look at the entire community, it identified that almost 14% of the southwest, and I'm looking at the comprehensive plan demographics that we provided, 14% of those communities were cost-burdened, 10% were severely cost-burdened. And that cost-burdening meaning, people are using, are needing to use 30 to 50, 49% of their income to pay for housing. Severely cost-burdened meant people are using more than half of their income to pay for housing. However, there is an interesting dynamic in the southwest community. There are a lot of property owners. 44.5% of the community owns housing, so there is wealth in the community, and of course, not to mention cultural wealth and people's connections to land. And I think some of the things that I'm hearing, Commissioner Baca, wanting us to further consider the importance of culture and identity. And so, we have proposed this plan, and it does propose, as Ms. Lawless and our staff has presented, this concept of corridors and centers, which is a regional concept, and where we're taking a look at considering elevating, building on our existing zones and our frameworks. And so, we did start with a 12-density along the corridor, which, by the way, the southwest area plan, in this particular area, does have a framework that would allow for nine dwellings. So, we did go above that, but again, trying to be part of the solution for housing. And in the activity centers, we were, we are proposing 25 dwellings per acre permissively, and, and of course, we have the conditional allowances as well. But we're here, this is a process. We have been very diligent to do our public outreach preceding the submittal, during the official CPC, and now the BCC process. We've done continued extensive outreach, but we're not done yet, and we continue to hear that there are concerns with the densities, and we're, you know, prepared to continue modifying, if that is the direction that the commission would like us to take.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I made just a couple of questions. Again, I apologize, I'm not trying to put anybody in a spot, but again, I, sometimes I can't help myself. But, so, it, it's not that, that I want to, you to consider the character, history, and culture. It's, A, the community wants that, number one, and number two, you and your own plan says you want that. And I have the, the various places in the plan that I don't necessarily need to quote, but I could, where you state in the plan that is a goal, historic preservation, to recognize areas' unique characteristics and history. That is replete, that is many references in the plan to that concept. That is a very important concept to myself, as a resident and as a native, and I think it's a very important concept to a lot of the people that may be here to speak later, and certainly, a lot of people that I've spoken to over the last two months, because I have spoken to a lot of people. I, I would say, and as, and over with, if you include the meetings and the individual conversations that I had in person on tele, by telephone and email, at least 250 conversations over the last two months. And so, my question to you, what that goes to, is that in talking about the character and the unique character, I, we understand that it's changing. We get, we get it, you know, we know that it's changing, it's not, there's alfalfa field. But did you look, you have this area, this sliver, that as I call it, and I'm not trying to denigrate it in any way, but it's a sliver in the grand scheme of things. So, if you look west, you'll see nothing but development. And I am not exaggerating. I encourage any retailer out there, any business owner that wants to open up a restaurant, if you're not looking at the southwest Mesa, an answer, you're missing the boat, because there are hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of units being built as we speak. But more importantly, not more importantly, but for my, for this purpose, if you look to the east of this area, yeah, there's not alfalfa field in this area, but if you go down below, you will see, I know there's some people here in the audience that won't speak to that, there are. There are small farms, they're not 20-acre parcels, but there may be backyard farms, there may be orchards, there's a secias, there's part of what is our history, our culture, it's what makes us who we are, is, and we're proud of that history, that culture, the, and it's a, it's a, it's a multicultural melting pot, because when people move to that community, they don't change us, we change them. We change them, and they love the culture, they love the secias, they love the open spaces, they love what we have. And I try not to talk about it too much, because I'm not really trying to encourage more and more people to move to the area. But, but, you know, to, to live there, quite frankly, contrary to some people's stereotypical, stereotypical views, is to love the area. And that's where we're coming from, that's where I'm coming from, and based on my comments with, and discussion with people, and not just over the last two months, over the last, I don't want to say how old I am, but many, 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 many years, if I put it that way, it's just a, and so, so that's my question, did, to, and there is a question there, is did you look at and consider the area directly to the east of the plan, and get down into the valley, and see what is there in those areas?
Yes, County Manager.
One year, and I still can't turn this on, I apologize. If I could, I'm just going to say to the staff that I want you, if you can, just repeat the question back, because I want to make sure we're answering what, what is being asked of us. And so, on this particular question, I think what you've asked, and you've asked this a couple of times, and this is what I want us to try to respond to, which is, in the development of this plan, how were the contiguous land uses being considered relative to what is being requested of you all in terms of your consideration? That is the question I think you're asking. Is that accurate?
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Okay. If I may also try to restate the question. So, we are recognizing that there is tremendous growth on the west side, on the west Mesa, and a really rich history and agricultural tradition to the east of this property that we want to preserve. And so, I would say that cores represents an opportunity for a transition between those two. I would say that by allowing more commercial development, light industrial development, more housing along cores, we are relieving that development pressure from occurring in those more rural areas to the east. I would say that if you are a farmer who wants to take your produce and process it and sell it as salsa, as any other value-added product, and you want to capitalize on the people to the west of you who would be buying that, cores makes a perfect transition point for you to be able to do your food processing right adjacent to your farmland, and then sell it to all those people to the west. I think that cores is that transition point, it's that inflection, where you can provide services to people who then don't need to go across the river for them. You can provide housing to people who don't want to build apartments on agricultural land. You can provide business owners an opportunity to capitalize on all that growth to the west in the county, in, along this corridor, where people can, can bus in from, from across the river and take the bus to, to visit your restaurant, to purchase your retail goods, to, to purchase the things that you've crafted in your, in your artisanal manufacturing area, which we're allowing in this zone. I, I think cores is really the ideal opportunity here to bridge that gap between the urban to the west and the rural to the east.
And, and thank you, Mina. And, and you're right, I agree with you to some extent, that it is a transitional zone, without a doubt. Without a doubt, it's a transitional zone between, but if you, if you're one of those small growers, you're not going to take your produce to the west side, I can guarantee you that. You can take it to Guterres Hubble House that has a market, you can take it to the South Valley Rose Market, which has a market, you're going to take it to Central 1-8 that has a market, so that's where you're going to go. And, and I appreciate your, your thoughts about that, but there are already established markets, you know, in the valley area that people are going to, going to go to, to sell their product. So, speaking about activity centers, I think somebody was speaking about it, the plan refers to four of them, the presentation mentioned only three of them, and I understand that the fourth is La Estancia, which is a, a different, higher density, a higher category, sort of a different, which makes perfect sense, because it already is essentially developed. And, and so, this came up to me in my, in my, in my various conversations, I was reminded of the fact that that area directly to the east of the Walmart and the theater has already been zoned or rezoned for 450 housing units, and preserved 150 acres of open space, which I was not involved in that. From afar, I watched the debate, and I heard, and I thought that was a really interesting and, and good compromise to preserve open space, open land, but allow for development. And I guess my question to you, isn't that sort of the ideal of the activity center that we would want to have, where you have open space, you have housing of different types, and then you have actual retail, where you could get out of your car and walk to and not drive? Isn't that an example of what, what the ideal activity center would be? Would you agree that's the case?
Chair Olivas and Commissioner Baca, I believe that is what we're proposing in this plan.
So, my question to you, then, thank you for, is that, is, do you believe there is sufficient land at Sage, Aranaw, or Bridge to do what is occurring at La Estancia?
Commissioner Olivas, Chair Olivas, Commissioner Baca, as, as you stated, La Estancia is what we're calling a community activity center, which is a, a higher level of intensity than the neighborhood activity centers that we're proposing at the other three intersections. So, we are, we are not going to see a repeat of La Estancia at, at these other three intersections. This, this will be a, a lower-scale, more, more neighborhood level of, of commercial services, as opposed to the regional level that we see at La Estancia.
Well, for example, at Blake and Coors, which I drive by every single week of my life, I know that area very well. There's a, a, a facility there that was owned by, Burnley County, owned by the Hinkley family, who I've known for 50 years, and they sold it to somebody who was going to make it into an auto-buy shop, it's been on hold for a couple of years for some reason. And right next to it is an adjacent piece of land, so there'd be some potential. But on the east side, there's a gas station, and there's an auto parts store. And with all due respect, I think anybody, under the current traffic patterns that we have, is taking their life in their own hands to drive across that street, to take a bicycle across that street, and starting to walk across the street to go to that gas station, or go to that auto parts store, or go to that Wendy's that happens to be there. So, I hear what you're saying, you know, with all due respect, but my perspective is that goal is great, but there's simply not enough land in the neighborhood activity centers to accomplish the desired result. That's just, you know, my view in, in terms of discussing this with many, many, many people. I would like to ask you about the, the, some of the, the information that was quoted, for example, about the need for housing. What I read, and again, I have the page number, but I don't need to necessarily refer to it, but what I read is that, that when there, people were talking about housing, the type of housing they were interested in was not workforce housing, were not just general large housing complex. They're talking about multi-generational housing, which is certainly part of our cultural heritage in that area, and probably throughout the state. They were talking about senior housing and assisted living housing, which is also certainly part of the culture in that community and of this state, to have your family close to you, yes. But I didn't see, and there, maybe I'm wrong, and please point me to the, to the statistics in the plan, that said there is some general lies need for multifamily, non-generational, non-related housing. I didn't see that reference in the plan, and if I, if I missed that, please let me know.
So, Commissioners, as Richard said, you know, this is a land use.
Mina, if I'm a, yeah, sorry. Mr. Chair, Commissioner Baca, I appreciate the comments and the opportunity to clarify some of this. So, when we talk in the zoning code about a building typology, a, a multifamily development, we don't discriminate how those are necessarily used. So, if those are then occupied by... So if those are then occupied by a family that wants to live in close proximity as a multi-generational type of arrangement, or for folks of an older demographic to call those places their residences, we're not discriminating against those types of, what we're trying to do is create the opportunity for that, that building, that type of building that comes through a specific section of the building code to be able to be constructed. So I hear your concerns and I hope that by just explaining that the type of structure that is opened up as an option can accommodate the spectrum of housing needs, be it the young adult that's not ready to purchase their starter home, to the family that wants to have their parents or their children closer to them, or the person that's older and in a later stage of their life that doesn't want the maintenance responsibilities of a single family dwelling.
And, and I appreciate that, Mr. Hama, but what I'm saying is that I, from the survey result, I did not see anybody in any great numbers ask for any other type of housing other than something that would be a benefit to their senior, both in their own home or as a general. That's what I'm saying in terms of the survey result. I did not see that. I understand your intention. I understand what, what you're saying in terms of creating those opportunities, but I not see any data in the surveys that, that indicated anything other than those two things, multi-generational family and senior housing, which I think is something very, very important as a general rule.
Commissioner Baca, I just wanted to, to interject real quick, if I may. Just first of all, a quick time check. It's 3:15. We're slated to run this hearing until four. And I want to check with Julianne and Javier, how many speakers do we have, if I may?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have 11 speakers.
Okay. So I'm, I'm just wanting to, to make sure that we defer our respect to the public that came out here. Do not want to interrupt your line of questioning by any means. And then Commissioner Barbara Baca also had some questions. I had some thoughts, but I'll, I'll hold those if I have to. But I just wanted to, to give that time check and make sure that we leave enough time for the public. So I'll defer to you as to.
Thank you. Just one last quick question before, yes, and I'll shut up. In regards to the fatalities, I had always heard that there were 18 along that area, but I think in the presentation today, I think I saw it was a total of eight in this area. And I don't know if it was over what period of time. And the only reason I bring that up in terms of the number is that, is, is the concern that I've heard significantly over the last few months is about the traffic issues and concerns. And is it eight or 18? Does somebody have that data that can provide? And along those same lines, and it's not really a question, but there was a resolution passed by this commission. I'm not sure if anybody, I think maybe Mr. Benson was on the commission at that time, making cores a priority by the county to address these sorts of issues and concerns. That was in 2021. I don't know if that ultimately led to the, the grant application and that we was received a couple of years ago, the $9 million or not. But I just want to, just to, to reemphasize that there is significant concerns about traffic safety in, in that corridor. It has been for a number of years.
Chair Levis and Commissioner Baca, so it depends on what period of time you're looking at. So some of these numbers are going back 10 years. Some of them are going back five years. At the time we submitted for the federal grant, which was now three years ago, we were looking back further in time and there were more fatalities. There were 18 fatalities in, in that set of data. And, and that wasn't just pedestrian fatalities. That was all, all fatalities in this section of cores. But more recently, there have been fewer. And I think part of the reason for that is because the signal at Los Estancia was not turned on until a few years ago. And several of those fatalities occurred at that intersection. So that's actually helped that we have that, that signal turned on. But in, so from today, if you go back five years, it's not, it's not quite as high, but, but it still is a, a concern, the, the number we're seeing for this corridor.
And thank you for making the point of that. We could have an impact on traffic safety with, with, with certain procedures. I'll defer.
Okay. We'll go to Commissioner Barbara Baca.
I'll, I'll be brief. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and, and thank you, Commissioner Baca. I think what you're hearing is, is the passion of the individuals who live in this community. And, and I hear it too. I see it, you know, I used to drive down to Los Chavez as a, as a kid. There was, Coors Corridor was Coors Corridor. The, the development is pretty remarkable. And so the planning of this is very important. You know, I am very interested in your, your statement about cores could be the, the bringing together of to the east toward the Bosque and to the west toward the development. My concern with that is that right now it's a barrier and, and the traffic moves so quickly and, you know, I mean, not quickly. I mean, they speed and people are killed on that road. And so my question, and then I do really want to hear from the public. My question is, is your design overlay zone I'm very interested in because I know on North Coors that, that in my district, there's, there was the Coors Corridor plan done many years ago that really protected to the east toward the mountains that you shed, that setback, that, that, you know, the development on one side was, was actually guided by that corridor plan differently than the development to the west because they had, they had these similar differences in topography, et cetera. So my question is, does this design overlay zone that I'm, I'm still not really clear on exactly what it does in terms of landscaping, in terms of traffic slow? I don't know if there's anything in there about slowing traffic, those kinds of things. And most importantly, I think what Commissioner Baca and, and our, are my neighbors down south is the culture of, of the southwest valley, you know, the south valley on the west side of the river with that rural nature. So does that design overlay address those kinds of questions? If it doesn't, I think that we really need to roll up our sleeves because what you're hearing people, or you will hear people say, and what we're hearing from my colleague, is that there, urbanization in the valley is a big deal and our job is to make sure we guide it and make sure we try to, you know, work toward retaining that, the, the value of the culture and the, and the residents that are there now. So long-winded question for what does the design overlay do, do for that?
Yes. Thank you, Commissioner Baca. So the, the design overlay is in combination with the zoning. So the zoning did very much consider the impacts of the height and those step backs that we discussed are a very clear outcome of how we were looking to ensure view corridors are retained. We did through our process, you know, run a number of studies in terms of like what the impacts of the height would be and what the potential kind of build could be based on those standards. And so we feel like the protections within the, both the corridor and the activity zone do reflect those concerns. And again, the heights are capped from what the angle plane currently allows, and that was also a very direct response to that. The, there are a number of policies in place that really look at ensuring that multimodal and safe pedestrian and infrastructure is put in place going forward. This process did not include a roadway redesign, but any, can, you know, any future roadway projects that happen within the area have to prove compliance with those policies. So that is a critical item. When you adopt this plan, those policies become the guiding principles that future projects need to aspire to. And it does provide a number of protections for onsite pedestrian facilities that are currently not in play in the underlying zoning code in, in terms of ensuring the relief of conflicts between vehicles and bicycles and pedestrians, ensuring connectivity to adjacent infrastructure like transit stops, ensuring appropriate buffering between incompatible uses, ensuring the, the kind of unified landscape buffer on the adjacent to the cores right of way. So in our opinion, we have really tried to find the balance of incentivizing the development that we heard was desired in areas that were deemed appropriate by higher ranking policy, but doing so in a way that really tries to ensure measures of protections. And, and I do want to just state that, that the parcels along cores are challenging. Many of them are very odd sizes, you know, they're narrow, they have a lot of constraints in terms of topography. So while I know that the densities sound concerning, how they play out on the ground, most of those parcels very much limit what is actually feasible. So, you know, the, the idea behind higher density allowances and, and these wider varieties is that we allow the opportunities, but it still doesn't mean that they're going to happen continuously along the corridor because there's only a number of areas where they're feasible, given the constraints of the sites themselves.
Commissioner Baca, any follow?
Well, just the follow-up is, so is the design overlay zone the same for either side of the street? There's, there's no difference for the east side versus the west side?
There are some differences between the Los Estancia Center and the, the remainder of the corridor, but the streets, the, each side of the streets are treated the same. And we did run a couple of scenarios when we were writing the zoning to see if there, if, if different differentiations were needed on either of the sides of the street and they didn't make a tangible input, impact in how development would play out, in our opinion. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I'm just going to make a few quick comments here and then we'll, we'll go into public comment if there's nothing further up here. I just wanted to say a, a couple of items of feedback and, and some of these are new. I had the opportunity to meet with planning staff the last go around before we heard this. But, you know, this isn't my area and I, I absolutely defer to Commissioner Baca, who lives in this area, represents this area. But just in general, these are really just items of feedback, not necessarily specific to this plan and nothing that I'm specifically proposing now. But I just think parking minimums are, I, I, I don't like them personally. I think it's not, not a good thing. And in this regard, 1.5 units per, per unit means that we are going to proliferate black top in the area. And hopefully it'll be GSI type of infrastructure, which is part of the plan. That's good. But, and I realize that for people that live in the neighborhood, they probably like parking minimums or would like more parking minimums. But I'm just saying as, if the idea is to incentivize housing, which was a big part of the presentation, parking minimums are inconsistent with maximizing that kind of development. If we're going to go the route we're going here, which is frankly kind of a very laissez-faire approach, that is, we will try to do these sort of incentives at a broad level and will hope that private development comes in and fills the gap versus as I've advocated for a more robust public intervention, i.e. public housing. Like if we're going to say that we need affordable housing, let's build it rather than, you know, change all these labyrinthine structures and hope that that incentivizes capital to come in and ask, usually then ask for more incentives to do that work through a profit motive. And, and height maximums are in the same vein of, but, you know, I realize we're also talking about view sheds and all that, but it's sort of like, we can't necessarily have both of those. We're, or, or maybe there is a happy medium. And then the other comments that the director and staff are, are well aware of, that I hope can be incorporated in here now or at a future date, depending on what we do here tonight, today, is my other items of feedback were in relation to monument signs, just sort of, if we're talking about good quality development, making sure that we actually incentivize in new developments, really high quality, good looking development, which, which I think is monument signs versus the typical lollipop kind of thing that we see, just making the community more, more friendly looking, I think. And then we also talked about some fencing minimums, particularly where it abuts a residential area because, you know, this, as I read this, this would allow some of these commercial properties that back up to a residential property to potentially have chain link fencing or something like that there. And this would require, what I'm proposing would, would ask for block or, you know, something more obscure because just, you know, as a, as a neighbor, just thinking of what that transition looks like, I think it's more friendly and, and less of a, it's more of a transition between the, the use types. So I think you're already aware of those and I, I believe you all were prepared with some language to potentially pursue that. And then the last thing was on the small, the contractors' yards. And, and I, I don't know that we actually had a, a solution for this, but was just to say that as a small contractor, there's a big difference between a contractor's yard in terms of how planning, I think, sees it, which is like a big gravel yard and a, you know, huge semis and stuff coming in and out versus small contractors, right? Plumbers, electricians, landscapers, people with a small footprint, relatively small impact on the, the neighborhood and just kind of being able to treat those differently. And, and by the way, many of those people probably live in the neighborhood and, and would like to be able to operate their businesses legally in that area in a nice facility. And so just thinking about that, that there is a distinction between gravel yard and a, you know, a small contractor's yard. So with that, I wanted to, to move on to public comment. And so we do know that we have several speakers signed up. So for our speakers today, each person has two minutes and you'll be alerted to your remaining time by the, the lights on the podium. When your name is called, please make your way to the podium. If you're speaking in person, before making your statements, please state your name for the record. And in order to maintain decorum and in the spirit of professionalism and respect for everyone, the speakers, we do ask that you adhere to the two minute time limit. I think we'll have enough time for, for everyone if everybody adheres to that. And then if your conduct, if the conduct of the presenter violates the rules, you may be asked to remove, to leave or be subject to removal. And so with that, Javier, if you will, please call the names.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This afternoon, we have a total of 11 speakers, all in person. Our first speaker will be Jerry Noble, followed by Peter Eschman, followed by Mark Belon.
My name is Jerry Noble. I live at 311 Blake Road Southwest. I am president of the Blake Road Neighborhood Association and a member of the steering committee for the plan. I thank the commission for deferring action on the plan, which enabled additional public input. However, that public input does not show up in the recommendations that I have seen so far. The staff findings and conditions for approval ignore the concerns that were strongly expressed by neighbors about the Blake Road Activity Center. The report states, and I quote, "This plan provides an opportunity to create places that are unique and custom tailored to the values, cultures and identities of the area." End of quote. But the plan fails to act on this opportunity by proposing four-story, 20-unit buildings at activity centers. That intense development adjacent to our neighborhood would have quite the opposite effect. It would diminish our sense of place, impacting the South Valley's character and identity as well as our connections to it. Commissioner Baca was present at our well-attended October 7th neighborhood meeting. Blake Road neighbors passionately opposed a four-story high-rise building and strongly called for a two-story limit instead. Additionally, the unique topography at the southeast corner of Coors and Blake includes a 20-foot drop-off as you enter the neighborhood because of the old Burnley Motors site. That drop-off would dramatically exaggerate the height of a four-story building. And I would also like to point out that there are no four-story apartment buildings in Burnley County. The South Valley must not be used as an experiment for this type of intensive housing development. Thank you.
Peter Eschman, followed by Mark Belon, followed by Bruce Rosegri.
Chair Levis and Commissioners, good afternoon. My name is Peter Ashman. I'm speaking on behalf of the Carnetier Real Neighborhood Association and the South Valley Coalition of Neighborhood Associations. I've lived in the South Valley for over 50 years. Only one building in the South Valley exceeds two stories in height and structures exceeding two stories are not in keeping with the character of the South Valley. Structures taller than two stories will form a large visual barrier when looking west from the valley floor towards the higher elevations throughout much of Coors Boulevard. Likewise, when looking east from Coors Boulevard, structures exceeding two stories will block views of the valley floor. Buildings taller than two stories create a highly urban setting that is out of character with the rest of the South Valley. We ask that the plan only allow We ask that the plan only allow buildings up to two stories tall. A secondary of concern is the potential for bad lighting that threatens our night skies and causes traffic accidents and pedestrian fatalities from the glare of bad fixtures. Light trespass occurs when lighting from one property goes beyond that property boundary and shines upward or laterally into adjacent property. We request that all lighting in the areas of the Coors Boulevard Sector Plan use fully-shielded fixtures. In many cases, shielding needs to extend downward beyond horizontal to prevent light trespass. We strongly recommend that the color temperature of lighting follow the standards of the Mexico Chapter of Dark Sky International. Light color is expressed in degrees Kelvin, and color should be much less than 5,000 Kelvin, because this color of blue-white light has very bad side effects on insects, birds, people, and our vanishing dark skies. And I also want to point out that we have the Valle de Oro National Wildlife Refuge on South Second, was designated as the very first dark sky urban place in the country.
Thank you, sir. I'm sorry, I'm going to have to cut you off there. You passed your two-minute time limit.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mark Belon, followed by Bruce Rizegri, followed by Mark Garcia.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Chair. I'm Mark Belon. I'm here for the Mid-Region Metropolitan Planning Organization, a division of the Mid-Region Council of Governments. After thorough consideration, the Mid-Region Metropolitan Planning Organization would like to voice its support for this plan's adoption. The plan shows judicial consideration in the interconnected demands of land use and transportation, namely, an adoption of policies encouraging moderate density and mixed uses near activity centers, a prioritization of road safety for all users, improving mobility across all modes, including transit, cycling, and walking, and fostering a variety of housing types. The newly-designated SC-C, SC-AC, and Design Overlay, with their allowable uses and design standards, serve as a concrete measure for achieving these policy goals while being careful to maintain and protect open spaces found across the South Valley. I would also add that any zoning restriction that restricts private development also restricts any public development, and so it is important to recognize the interplay that zoning restrictions have on everyone, from big developers, private developers, and public developers on developments. Additionally, Coors Boulevard is designated as a regional principal arterial, primary transit corridor, and bike lane candidate, as well as a road diet candidate by the Transitions 2045 MTP. These designations point to Coors Boulevard as being a critical spine through the region, highlighting the need for a variety of uses for a variety of people. As a whole, the plan would forward the transportation and land use policies found in the Transportation, or the Transitions 45 Metropolitan Transportation Plan, which Richard Meadows has gone through in far more detail than I could in this forum. But, quick highlight, it adopts and implements land use policy subdivision regulations and building and site development design standards that promote walkability, design and adapt transportation systems that meet the different needs of people for all ages and abilities, promote fiscally responsible growth patterns and transportation investments that provide the most benefit for the money spent, encourage a mix of land uses, retail, housing, entertainment, and more, and multimodal facilities in appropriate locations to encourage shorter, more active trips, and promote a diverse mix of housing in cost, unit types, and neighborhood settings, targeting areas within walking distance of frequent transit routes. We hope that you'll pass this plan. Thank you, Officer.
Bruce Rizegri, followed by Mark Garcia, followed by Adolfo Vaejos.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Councilors. My name is Bruce Rizegri, with the Stenson Tower Neighborhood Association, and we stand in for approval for both the Sector Plan Amendment and the South Coors Development Plan for several reasons. First, we're glad that the county staff has recognized that changes have occurred along Coors Boulevard during the past 50 years. We no longer have a Mark Coors in the South Coors, we have a Coors Boulevard. The land use along that corridor has changed significantly, from small agricultural plots to gas stations, to some small restaurants, to other types of community services, which right now could be benefited by improvements to the road rate structure, pedestrian, bicycle, and transit. But transportation planning and land use have to go hand-in-hand. You can't plan changes to a roadway without knowing what type of land uses will be used in that transportation system. So we view this as the first step in that, that process to put together a corridor plan, which addresses simultaneously both the land use and the transportation. And we don't disagree with the locations of the activity centers. We believe that housing to be dispersed throughout the corridor is better than 100-acre, 50-acre, 25-acre of housing in one location. Thank you.
My name is Mark Garcia, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the Garcia Family Trust. First, I want to thank Commissioner Baca for his thoughtful memo about the South Coors Sector Plan, his recognition of the South Valley's 400-year history, the agricultural roots, and the cultural identity of families like mine is exactly right. My family has been here for generations, and we continue to farm and are stewards of the land under A1 zoning. Our parcels at 3433 and 3437 Blake Road were mistakenly placed inside the activity center boundary. Planning staff has since acknowledged this error and has confirmed the intention to recommend removal of our land from the planned boundary and to maintain A1 agricultural zoning, unless we, as property owners, choose otherwise. We respectfully ask that this correction be formally included in this November 18th staff report. The updated map clearly shows our parcels as removed, and the record of conditions of agriculture, of approval reflect that the Garcia Trust's parcels in this block remain excluded from the Sector Plan and remain zoned A1, consistent with our historic agricultural use and our cultural heritage. We support Commissioner Baca's emphasis, as this is a genuine community. It calls for community engagement, and his understanding that this area is not the West Mesa, it is the historic South Valley with deep roots and long-lasting traditions. And I just want to say, I'm extremely heart, my heartstrings are tugged, because thinking of low-income families who are on subsidized housing to be stuck at Blake and Coors, that area is not an area for any child to grow up. Walking down the street for a JPR gravel sandwich does not sound appealing to me, nor having concrete trucks in and out. Like, there's established M1 zoning that works for our entire community. This, in that corridor, it's not thoughtful. These families deserve better. They deserve a better place to live than right there on Coors. And you obviously haven't been down there or taken your family's-
Sir, I'm going to have to cut you off there. Your time is up. Thank you.
Adolfo Vaejos, followed by Linda Vaejos, followed by Sarah Baca.
Thank you, Commissioners, Chairman. I want to thank everybody out here also. There's a lot going on here. But we lived on 1735 Coors Road for a long time, and getting off of that road onto Coors is rough. It's hard. And me and my family, we left. My niece lives there now, and it's still as hard, if not worse. But I, I know something has to be addressed with Coors Boulevard, and I don't, this sounds like a good plan. And I just want to thank everybody, and we're, we're for it, me and my sisters. Thank you.
Linda Vaejos, followed by Sarah Baca, followed by Rita Yanez.
Linda Vaejos isn't going to do it.
Sarah Baca, followed by Rita Yanez, followed by Armando Hernandez.
My name is Sarah Baca, and I live on Blake Road. And I guess our concern with my family is that we have a property on Coors and Sage, and we don't want to see the zoning change to commercial property, because it'll raise our taxes. That's our main concern. Thank you.
Rita Yanez, followed by Armando Hernandez, followed by Marcia Fernandez.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity. I'm Rita Yanez. I live at 3300 Blake Road Southwest. I am very concerned about the, the impact that this plan is going to have in our community, in our little street, as it has been. I agree with Mark wholeheartedly, with Commissioner Baca, and I just have a lot of questions as to, you know, what, what has brought this about. Like, are, are developers coming up, or have they come up and said, "I want to build a, a four-story building that is going to house low-income residents"? Is this where this is coming from? Are there residents, are there residents in the area that have said, "I am really interested in having another pot store on Coors, so I don't have to drive down to any of the other ones that are so, so prominent on our, on our city"? The traffic is terrible right now on Blake Road. It is hard to cross the street on foot. I have stood minutes waiting for, you know, traffic to slow down, so I can actually cross. Many of the, of the residents on our street are elderly or have children, and that creates a terrible problem. You know, I, I'm concerned for, for people that are, that are raising families right now. I, I foresee that, and that's not to mention the traffic on Coors. I mean, I, I go to Walmart, and I try to find whatever way I can to not come down on Coors to enter Blake, because it's impossible. You take, at certain hours of the day, it takes a long time. Anyways, I, I believe that this is, this is to the detriment of our community, and eventually, those of us that are, that want to continue that kind of community will be moving out of there, because it's, it's not going to be a pleasant place. Thank you.
Armando Hernandez, followed by Marcia Fernandez.
Good afternoon, and I want to thank everybody for being here. Commissioner Baca, I am also a member of the community. I live on 3112 Amalia Road, which is only a couple blocks from Coors. I want to express today, the, thank you for the opportunity to express my support for this South Coors Boulevard development. I currently own a property of 1482 Coors Southwest. This property currently is zoned A1. I'm on the north side end, closer to Sage. So if you're familiar with this area, you will see that it's a commercial use, like all that are in the area. There's schools, there's other commercial places there. I want, this existing property is already well-suited for this commercial use, and it blends with the unique character and charm of our neighborhood. By opening a business here on this, if this was to go on under this zoning, I'm confident that it will enhance this area, this development, this development plan holds the promise of creating valuable opportunities for property owners like myself, transform underutilized land into thriving commercial spaces. Additionally, it has the potential to generate employment for the community members, nearby residents contributing to their economic growth and overall prosperity of our area. While I understand some of the individuals, the concerns some individuals have, and prefer, and they prefer to maintain this agricultural zoning, I firmly believe that Sage and Coors Corridor is better complemented by a commercial with development, like, the limited, the limited number of dwelling units along this area makes it an ideal location for businesses that can effectively serve the needs of, the needs of our community and beyond. With great respect, I kindly, I kindly ask you to consider this development in favor of its approval, and it will pave the, the way for meaningful opportunities that will benefit my, many members of the community and property owners like me. Thank you, everyone.
Marcia Fernandez.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, my name is Marcia Fernandez. I live at 2401 Violet Southwest. I'm the president for life of the Foothill Neighborhood Association and secretary for life, it appears, of the South, South Valley Coalition Neighborhood Associations. And I had a question before I started my comments. There are two agenda items that are being considered today. Are we speaking on one or both? And do you get two minutes for each, or two minutes for both?
Normally, it's not a question and answer, but that one is, is relevant, I think. Julianne, can you?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would certainly defer to the chair's discretion on allowing for additional public hearing, but I think it's one public hearing per meeting, unlike a ordinance hearing.
Sure.
So just the Coors Sector Plan, not the Southwest Area Plan?
No, I, I would correct that. I believe we are, we are talking about both of them together.
Together, yes.
As planning staff said at the outset, they're really interrelated, and you kind of can't have one without the other.
Then I'd better read really fast. Okay.
We'll make sure we start your time over, so.
Thank you. Two different things. One is a plan for development, and the other is, is a Southwest Area Plan. The Southwest Area Plan is important to many of us who were there when it was first created. I felt really protective of it, of this document, until it was changed at a BCC meeting some years ago. Some of you may have been there at the meeting. They changed the, the Southwest Area Plan, and what we got for that effort was Los Estancia's, yes, chain restaurants from other parts of the country to give us anywhere USA, rather than South Valley, which is what all these good people here have come today to talk about and to advocate for. Yeah, we needed businesses, we all agree. We need lots and lots of things in the South Valley. What we didn't need was chain restaurants. What we didn't need was destruction of farmland. So, okay, that's the Southwest Area Plan. I'm terrified of changing the plan. My name's on the back of that document. I mean, I've, I've been doing this so long, and I really, really want there to be tremendous amount of consideration given to changing it. Okay, the other thing is, I think probably everybody's already said most of what I have to say, but I wanted to first thank the county for bringing forth the Coors Sector Plan, because it, it was like doing a defibrillator to my, my neighborhood association. My, my association's been in stasis for a really, really long time. So we needed to have an annual meeting, and I went around into my neighborhood, 75 houses of good people that I've known for, you know, 100 years, and in the agenda teaser that I handed to people, to put on there, the, the plan, and that there were some questions about apartments on Coors. I haven't had that many people come to a meeting in like 15 years, so thank you, and yay. Now their, their antenna are up, they're energized, they're wanting to talk, but they had these three things to say about the Coors Plan. First thing is, oh, and I heard this, oh my God, they, I heard this. Coors is terrible, dangerous, in bad repair, dark, and one of the best street racing places in the county. Traffic is horrible as it is. How will-
I'll give you an extra minute, because you're wearing so many hats representing, you know, a few different groups.
Yeah, I have two more organizations I didn't even mention. Okay. Traffic is horrible as it is. How will high-density housing impact that? And we have, we have no problem with multifamily housing, as long as the two items above are taken care of first. Coors is not safe. Coors is in bad repair. Coors is a lot of terrible things. It's also the lifeblood of our community. Can design guidance, or will design guidelines be put in place? And I think you answered that question, that there will be. We're really concerned about people driving, us, who live there, driving down the street, or people who come to our community, driving down Coors, looking around and saying, "Oh yeah, this looks just like North Coors." Oh, no, this looks like North Fourth, with all the big box apartments, right up next to the sidewalk and ugly. And I know these guys have done a really good job of making sure it does not look like that. But that is the impression, that my neighbors, when they sat around my table and hammered their fists and were upset about things, they said, "This is not North Coors. This is not North Fourth. This is the South Valley, and people need to listen to us." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This concludes our public comment.
All right. Thank you to, to all of our public commentators, really. I, I learned a lot from, from all of you and hearing your, your feedback. So, all right, Commissioners, we have five minutes remaining in the, in the two-hour hearing that we had scheduled here. So we don't have a whole lot of time for additional discussion, or, or, you know, kind of other dialogue on this. So I think we need to kind of decide where, where we're headed here, and, you know, certainly we can bring in planning staff, but I would defer to Commissioner Frank Baca, of course, because this is in his district, and his constituents are the primary ones here.
I, I enjoy this dialogue. I enjoy hearing from people that agree. I enjoy hearing people that don't agree. It helps to understand, and, and better to hopefully do, you know- It helps to understand and better to hopefully do, you know, the best job possible rather than just, you know, moving it through just because, you know, it's on our agenda. So I, what I would love to do is have the opportunity to really go over that presentation that was given to us this evening. I've probably heard this presentation at least half a dozen times, the shortened version, the long version, not to mention rereading the plan myself, but this last version that was presented today, I think was more detailed than the more current version, and I would actually love to have the opportunity to sit down with staff, you know, everybody that has spoken, others, you know, that are there at the table, to go through and understand and to integrate what we're hearing as much as possible, because I've heard different things. I've heard different things, you know, from not four-story to two-story, okay, to, you know, just different concept. The construction area is a good thing, not, you know, maybe not a good area, a good thing that somebody else's mine. So I would really love to take the opportunity and as a result of that, what we learned today in the last couple of months, and with all due respect for the work that's been done and the presentation that was made today, I would respectfully make a motion to defer this for another period of time so that we have a time to sit down and talk with that if that would be agreeable to the commission.
I'll second the deferral. Commissioners, any questions? I mean, unfortunately, I think regardless of how we feel about this, we're in a point here where we would really be rushing any kind of decision and, you know, thoughtful conversation about where we're at if we do try to complete this in the next four minutes. Commissioner Baca, did you?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So my question is, is a continuance the same thing as a deferral? To me, I think a continued conversation about this is what I am needing. I mean, I really do feel like we have some folks that are supporting this, even, you know, my Commissioner Baca, because we need planning. You know, we need this oversight. We need to engage with the community on what we want to see on this road. So I consider this a very good conversation, and to continue it for decision-making is where I'm sitting. So I guess that's a question, or is it just semantics? I don't, I think the continuance.
Madam Chair, or excuse me, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Baca, I think given that we've heard some of the content, taken public testimony, and you'd like to continue the discussion, a continuance of this proceeding to a future hearing date would be most appropriate, in my opinion. I do agree that there's probably, you know, we're splitting hairs maybe in what we call that. The point being that we'd like to continue the discussion with the board and the community to refine this to a point where we find consensus, or as close to as we can.
Director, and this may be more of a legal or procedural question, and also a question to Commissioner Frank Baca, because I hear what you're both saying. Is there any functional difference between a continuance and a deferral? And what I mean by that is, I think primarily, public hearing. Would there be an opportunity for additional public comment in one of those that there wouldn't be in the other?
Hi, I'm Valerie Jo. I work in the county attorney's office, and I know with our county planning commission matters, and I believe it's the same here at the Board of County Commissioners, deferral is something you do at the beginning when you don't hear anything about a particular matter. In this particular case, since we've had extensive presentations, public comment, a continuance would be most appropriate. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, County Manager.
Thank you. What I would like to recommend is just to be realistic with time, that we consider the February thirteenth meeting instead of trying to bring, December's a very full meeting. January, we'll be getting ready for budget and legislative session, so I would like to recommend February thirteenth. And as you know, I don't like deferrals or continuances. I'm not saying that today. I just mean that normally I would be trying to bring this back more quickly, but given the level of conversation today, I think it may be more realistic if we can bring it at that timeframe.
Director.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, the department would support County Manager's words, and the thirteenth of February is something that we would certainly be able to work towards in addressing concerns heard from the public and to continue to work with the commission in addressing changes or potential amendments that they'd like to make to this document. If I could have the benefit of one moment, just some very quick clarifying things that I think is important for both the public and the board to understand before we conclude today. The building heights, the department would like to just put out that we are leading here with humility and an open mind, that, you know, we don't expect or don't have the understanding that the document we put forth is perfect. We are open to making changes that are consistent with the values of the community and the desire of the board. Being mindful of also the fact that there are certain existing entitlements that we do want to be careful about not interfering with, and, you know, we would be in deference to county legal about their opinion around those specific points. Dark skies, that's applicable county-wide. So anything that happens here or other places in the county, that is a standard that the county upholds. The Garcia family here to make comments about wanting their property be removed. The department is in full support of that. We're prepared to make those changes and to remove them from the maps and to have them retain the A-1 zoning. And then a comment was made about taxes. Not an automatic action, in my understanding, that would raise someone's taxes. It's really more tied to how they're assessed and how the property is used. That's also why the department is advocating for opt-in zoning in the corridor so that if a property owner is not ready to utilize the new zoning designation, they have the benefit of deciding when they want to do that, if ever. With that, we would encourage specific direction, if the board is able, to provide to us today about how you want us to proceed, or we can schedule individual briefings and work with you all from that perspective. The department's ready, however you want to move forward.
All right. Thank you, Director. So we had a little bit of feedback on the question about a deferral versus a continuance. I wanted to say one thing about the February timeframe. I'm just thinking, you know, this has been on our agenda for quite some time now after it was deferred for very good reason, and now, you know, it's kind of unfortunate timing with holidays and all of that. But also, I want to push back a little and say that is our job to get this stuff done. And, you know, we had a business owner that was here that I feel like is probably looking for some certainty in making decisions, and we have, you know, neighbors that also want some certainty as to what's going on. So, I mean, if that's the best we can do, that's the best we can do. We do have a lot of other workshop items and, you know, things that are going on in December, but I just did want to suggest that, you know, this has been around for a while, and I think certainty is a good thing. But I'll yield to Commissioner Baca. Do you want to revise your motion for a continuance? Nobody answered, actually, one second. Nobody answered my question about public comment at a continuance versus a deferral, and obviously, I think that's still probably the prerogative of the commission, but would there be anything preventing that? I just want to make sure that the public has another opportunity.
So.
Yes, go ahead, County Manager.
Yeah, so I, we do have a meeting on January twenty-seventh. It's two weeks sooner. I will just say, the staff understands this, and I think I've shared with all of you my concern about how long things stay on our to-do list because it does hold us up from doing other things. So it's two weeks, but I would really defer to the commission for your direction on, is it the twenty-seventh or the thirteenth? I will bring you chocolate on the thirteenth, but I will do that anyway. Mr. Chair.
All right. Thoughts, Commissioners? Commissioner Barbara Baca.
My thought on this is that I've heard so much input, and I think that we can get it right. I would support a continuance to the February thirteenth, not because of the chocolate, but I'll take it. That's my take.
Commissioner Baca, you made the motion.
Yes, I have mixed feelings about it because, you know, I will tell you, you have no idea how much time I've spent on this, literally hundreds of hours, I would say, and that's not completely the time that I spend worrying about it and thinking about it. I mean, I'm just talking about the time I have pen and paper and reading the, you know, attending meetings, reading the documents. And so, to some extent, to get it over sooner is good, but at the same time, you know, to get it right and to make sure we have enough time with the holidays coming up and travel plans and that sort of thing, I think we would need probably some time in January. I mean, I would love if any other Commissioners could, you know, be involved in that conversation. There's a lot of experience here on this, you know, a lot of other options, perhaps another working session. I love working sessions, not everybody does, but me, myself, I think I would need a couple of half-days to really sit down and go through this and fully understand and be able to answer questions because ultimately, what I feel I need to be answering to the community and be, you know, be accountable to the community and say, you know, "Why did you vote this way, and why are we doing this, and what is, is in the plan"? I need to understand it so I can convey it to people. So I would, with all due respect, make a motion that we continue the proceeding to February thirteenth, twenty twenty-six.
All right. I'll maintain my second. Any further discussion on the deferral? Now, there was a request from staff for some direction, I think, as to sort of how to proceed. You know, I think we can certainly provide some of that based on public comment and comment of the commission. I guess I would say, you know, to me, I heard height restrictions were clearly something that Commissioner Baca and community brought up, as well as the transportation piece, the Coors Boulevard as a physical barrier and the safety issues related to that. I would like the issues that I raised, not the new issues that I raised, but the original ones about the fencing and the monument signs and potentially a small contractor's yard or something like that to be proposed for addressing. And I'll leave that open if there's anyone else with further direction, but I think that was what I heard. All right. County Manager, Director, any further thoughts?
What I would just recommend is that some of what you said was a little antithetical to the plan. So what I would recommend is that the staff have an opportunity to take in all the feedback that, and thank you to the public for giving comment too, but that we get a chance to take all that feedback individually, meet with you. We know this is a quasi-judicial situation too, so I want to be really careful about that and do our very best to make sure that we can reflect your thoughts in documents that could be presented directly to you for your consideration to share with the commission.
Okay. I think that's clear. All right. With that, we'll close the floor if there's nothing further and take a vote on the deferral. Yes, Director?
Mr. Chair, just to clarify, it's for both requests today. The motion, I would encourage a amendment to that.
Would you be willing to clarify your motion, Commissioner Baca? That is for both items?
Yes. Thank you for that note, yes, to clarify, to include both, and I don't have the numbers right in front of me, but both items are on the agenda today to be continued until February thirteenth, twenty twenty-six.
All right. Agreed with that. All those in favor, signal in the affirmative. Yes? Any opposed? All right. That passes on a four-zero vote, so we will see that again February thirteenth, and a special thanks to all the community members that came out and participated today. Okay, so next up, we have our Board of Finance meeting. Just going to give everybody kind of five minutes to reset here, so we'll come back around four fifteen. With that, the meeting is adjourned.